Good evening Bellevue, welcome to the city council meeting and it's Tuesday, August 17th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We will start with the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation if you remain standing. Pastor Brian Rice with Christ the King Lutheran Church from 7308 South 42nd Street is here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for having me. School has started, colleges start pretty soon, hours to aerospace is this weekend, all things that in Bellevue means summer is coming to an end and it is a good time to pause and thank God for his many blessings.
Let's pray. God of grace and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and for the opportunity to serve the people of Bellevue. Help us to act with integrity and conviction, help us to listen with understanding and goodwill, help us to speak with grace and with purpose. Give to this council a spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be leaders of our city, the leaders that we need them to be. Help us to see the humanity and the dignity of the people with whom we disagree and to treat all people, no matter the influence they wield with your reverence, the reverence your creation deserves. Renew the people of this community with the joy of helping Bellevue to be a place of welcome and prosperity for all who seek to call it home. We pray in the confidence of your goodness and your love. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Rice. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Susan, or who's here tonight?
Shirley.
Shirley's gonna do it. Shirley, would you take a roll call? Thanks.
Councilman Stinson?
Here.
Councilman Cook?
Here.
Councilman McCaw?
Here.
Councilman Preister?
Here.
Councilman Burns?
Here.
Councilwoman Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Shirley. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports, 5A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda. Do we have to vote on altering or can I make them?
You need to do a motion to amend.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
I'd like to make an amendment that we move 14C and 14C1 to be right after 10A.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to amend the agenda, moving item 14C and 14C1 to right after 10A. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Councilman Prester, is yours allowing you to vote?
I vote yes.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, I have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to approve the agenda as amended. Any questions? Please vote.
It's coming. Okay, thank you. All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item 5B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Burns to approve the consent agenda. Any questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. And I noticed Senator Blood was in the house, I think she's out in the hall, she showed up, but anyway, thank you for your support and thank you for showing up, Senator. Item seven, special presentation, 7A, sidewalk task force update. Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. In the city's continued effort for good uses of our taxpayer dollars and in the interest of public safety, Mayor Haig asked me last year to head up a sidewalk task force. We identified an area in Bellevue that was, we, that we sent 1,225 surveys to and it was in northwest Bellevue, it was identified of an area that could also receive grant funding. Of those 1,225 surveys that we sent out, 411 were returned back. We sent out English, we also sent out Spanish versions of this. That meant we had a 34% response on the survey, which we were overjoyed that that many residents responded back to us. We asked each resident eight questions and nine was for comments and suggestions. The question number seven said, please describe if you would share in the cost of construction on sidewalk on your property and it went anywhere from extremely likely, unlikely, neutral, likely and extremely likely. In that particular question, there was 46% that said extremely unlikely, 18% said unlikely. Question number eight was, please describe if you would share in the cost of repairs to your sidewalk should the city be able to receive grant money. 43% said extremely unlikely, 15% said unlikely. So basically, we thought that it would be something that the citizens would want, the citizens spoke, so the sidewalk task force is now complete for this year. We may evaluate it next year, some other areas that possibly could use sidewalks. Thank you for all those that helped me with this, Councilwoman Prester, Councilwoman Cook, Mayor was at the meetings, Legal and a few other departments. Questions at this moment, Mr. Mayor?
Jim, do you have anything you want to add as far as how we're working those sidewalks? I know we're gonna concentrate around the schools and...
Sure. Probably to add to what Councilman Welch talked about is, our intent was to use some of our CDBG funds in that particular area and do a 50%, like a 50/50 match, I think just to add on the backside of that, there wasn't much flavor with the citizens to make that 50% match, but in turn, what we'll do is anything that's a city-owned property or a public school or something that we deem as a safety hazard, our intent throughout this year and next year is to continue to work to add sidewalks in those areas that we find deficiencies in, not just in our northwest sector but throughout the city. So, be a little more of that to come as we go forward.
Any other questions for Councilwoman Welch? Okay, thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Item eight, we have no organizational matters. Item nine, we did not receive any citizen communication request. Item 10, liquor licenses, 10A, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The application for Michael E. Sullivan as the new manager for OSF Nebraska Inc. doing business as Outback Steakhouse at 10408 South 15th Street Bellevue. And I will open up 10A for a public hearing and is the applicant in the audience? You don't have to come forward, just hang around for any questions if we have any questions. Again, it is opened up for a public hearing if there's anybody here to speak for or against 10A. Anybody wanting to speak for or against the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission application for Michael E. Sullivan, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you Mayor, I'll make a recommendation to approve the, to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Michael E. Sullivan as a new manager for OSF Nebraska Inc. doing business as Outback Steakhouse at 1048 South 15th Street Bellevue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, and that will take us to 14C on the amended agenda. Which is request to approve the redevelopment plan for lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition, applicant Freedom Village LLC, general location 1811 Hillcrest Drive. And I'm gonna also read in 14C1, resolution number 2021-26, approve and authorize Mayor to sign the redevelopment plan for lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition. And I will open those two items up for public hearing now. If you would, please state your name and your address.
Good evening Mayor and council members, I'm Robert Griffith, Full and Camp Jovan, Johnson-Beller, 11440 West Center Road. Additionally, I'd like to introduce with us tonight is Jolene Roberts and Todd Arnie with the applicant, Freedom Village Hillcrest Health Services. Mr. Mayor, I would ask, since item 12A and 14C are connected in the same project, would you like me to enter, to present on both at the same time and close the hearing together or would you like to hear them separately?
Go ahead and answer.
You can present on both of them, but they will be two separate public hearings.
Thank you. As I said, the project is Freedom Village's senior living facility and I want to start first with a little bit of information and background on the site itself. So you can see the area of the site is outlined in red and hashed. Generally, it's between Fort Cook Road and Yalvin Road, right along Highway 370 there. The address is 1811 Hillcrest Drive, legally it's known as Lot 7, Fourth Tiller's Edition. The site is approximately 6.2 acres in size and if you can see on the next slide, it's bounded on two sides by other Hillcrest Health Services developments as well as Harmony Court to the north, which is a senior living facility as well. Currently, the site is zoned as BG and the site has been vacant for many years, it's covered in vegetation and we'll get more into that in a little bit later. There is also a parking lot covering the south and west portions of the site. So briefly, I touched on the history of the site because it is somewhat interesting. The site was originally part of the Tiller Farm till the 1970s when it was bought and then developed into a hotel. It has been under different control as a hotel for a number of years, including it was at one point Days Inn, then I also believe it was a Crown Court Hotel. And then around 2008, the then owner attempted to develop a water park on the site, which ultimately failed and the city subsequently then designated the site as blighted and substandard, which it is still today. The applicant today purchased the site in 2010 with the understanding that it would be eligible for TIF and as previously stated, the site is still currently vacant. There are a number of developmental challenges to the site. First, there is significant grade change from the east on the northern end of the site and second, there is a retaining wall that was a remnant of the attempted water park that needs a good amount of rehabilitation and reconstruction. There is an existing parking lot around it that needs to be, that's damaged and will need to be removed to make way for some all, to install some new off-street parking. And lastly, the access to Harland Drive will be closed off. So at this point, I want to have Jolene come up and she should be able to give you a lot of details about the project itself as well as show you some renderings and elevations.
Hi, I'm Jolene Roberts, 1902 Harland Drive, Bellevue. I know many of you, I've been around for a long time, providing aging adult services to which I'm now a customer. So, my goal is to just talk about the project description, tell you how we got where we are, I'm gonna spend two minutes max, and then I've asked Todd to run through a few slides just to make sure everybody's clear about how this project's going to unfold. So this is a 55-plus active adult community. In 2019, Hillcrest commenced a national firm to do a study for 55-plus housing in Bellevue and that came back very strong. So we pooled our resources and said, what's, what's the up and coming, what's the next 25 or 30 years gonna be like and where am I gonna live? So, we ended up hiring a national architect that has been in the business for over 50 years and that particular architect firm is called Lance Bozio, they're out of Denver. And we said, we want, we want what's gonna be needed in the next 25 years, we want what people 55 and older are looking for today. So the project is really centered around a product called Pocket Neighborhood and a Pocket Neighborhood is really a lock-and-leave neighborhood for people in a planned community that consists of smaller groups of residential homes surrounding a common area designed to promote a sense of community and neighborliness, which Todd's gonna show you, and enjoy maintenance-free living and in addition to having a site manager and community amenities that Todd's gonna be. So why do we choose this particular property? It's, as you can tell, it's close to the highway, it's close to the hospital, it's close to other aging adults that currently reside in that neighborhood, about 300 or so. It's close to a hospice agency, our home care agency and of course, our home office. In addition to that, when we got the site laid out, we were, we were, as you can tell, it's beautiful and it's something that Bellevue has. So that's why we chose this particular site. So can you tell them a little bit about the details Todd?
Sure. Todd Arnie, Hillcrest Health Services, 1902 Harland Drive. So what you're looking at on that rendering there is you're in the northwest corner of the six acres, kinda looking to the, looking towards Harland Drive off to the east. Really quickly again, don't want to take a ton of time here, but like Jolene talked, this is the site now, so north would be to the left-hand side of the screen, just kinda turned sideways on you there. But really, this, this project consists in my opinion of two different living options for residents. We have seven, what we call fourplex garden homes is what we're calling them. Each of those will consist of a garage and they're between 1,050 and 1,290 square feet, so that makes 28 total units, so there's seven fourplexes. And then the second is more of a apartment-style living, but it's not a big 100, 200 unit complex, seniors would rather be in something a little bit smaller and that's a 28-unit four-story apartment building that's along Harland Drive or 370. Those range 850 to 900 square feet, so total 56 units on the property. With that, lots of green space, the Pocket Neighborhood feel, if you guys kind of think of the old kind of back alley, so really the outside loop is gonna be where they pull in and park their, their cars, but their front porch actually faces the green space in the middle, so it really creates that sense of community and, and you can sit and look across that green space. Kind of that big oval there, that's about the size of a football field, it's like 108 yards long and about 40 yards wide, so it's a pretty good-sized green space in the middle. Some of the other features we have, the fenced-in dog park, fire pit, reading structures from resident gardens. Also talked about some of the on-street parking or off-street parking that'll be in the right-of-way, so working with Public Works on that. The community center also will have a little community room, outdoor patio for grilling, it'll also have a little fitness center, a little marketing office and so, I think it's a really, really good fit with something that Bellevue doesn't have, that we don't have in our portfolio either. Quickly run through this, this again, trying to show you guys the amount of green space we have here. So this is looking in the middle courtyard. Here's a view inside the courtyard, looking at the four-story apartment building, very modern but yet very, very senior-friendly in our world, we definitely need to have that. Kind of the drop-off, this would be facing the east, so if you guys know where Hillcrest Corporate Office is, this is basically facing the old drive-through of the bank building, this, this drive-through kinda lines up with that. Kind of view again, looking back towards the middle, you can see that fire pit reading area in the middle. And I think that's all I have from what this looks like, I'll let Robert finish up then.
So just to briefly conclude and wrap up, the TIF portion, the total proposed valuation on the full build-out, build-out of the product, project is $12.5 million and the project is projected to incorporate approximately $4.4 million in TIF eligible expenses. So the applicant is requesting $2,609,077 in TIF financing at a rate of 4.5%. The redevelopment plan as presented tonight has been recommended for approval by both Plan Department and the Plan and Commission. All three of us are happy to answer any questions, thank you very much.
Any questions at the current time before the, anybody else comes up? Councilwoman Welch?
Todd or Jolene, do, these are gonna be available for rent, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we want to make it clear that they're not providing the healthcare that you provide at the other locations, these are just basically villa homes that they can live in. And, and do we have any idea what the projected rents are going to be?
Yeah, we do actually.
I have it, yeah, give me one second here.
We had to do that for formal purposes.
And if, as he's looking that up, Jolene, this goes as planned, when will these be available for people to?
Through this process here, if it's on target, our first ones will open next June. Weather permitting, this winter.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, on the rental rates, so the apartment building, there'd be 1370 up to 2100 for the larger, the larger ones are 1290, those are about $2,100 rent on those.
So in the, in the apartment building, that's right, you said that's right around 1370 and then the fourplex patio homes can be?
Yeah, 17 to 21.
17 to 2100, perfect. Love this idea of the opportunity for lock-and-leave because with a lot of our residents retiring, they want to have a place here, but they also want to have another place in a lot warmer country in December and January, so. And there's no way you're old enough to be part of this.
Actually, I am. But thank you very much.
Okay, the public hearing is open, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding the development? Anyone wanting to speak regarding the redevelopment plan for lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition, please come forward. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, you have any questions from the Councilman Cook?
Thank you Mayor. I'll make a quick comment and then I'd like to make the motion. I, I think this development fits in real good there with all the other services. Literally, if you go down Hillcrest, I think the back street is Wall, pretty much all that is either Harmony Court or your facilities of Hillcrest Services, so I think it's just a neat little community and it fits in real good. I would like to make a motion that we delay the vote on this until our next meeting in September and the reason for that is, our next item that we're gonna talk about is, talks about the rezoning of this property and I believe that we should vote on both of them together, not vote on one tonight and have the other one still pending for our next meeting, so my motion is that we delay the vote on this until September 7th.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to delay the vote on 14C and 14C1 until the next meeting, September 7th. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 11, ordinances for adoption, third reading, we have none this evening. Item 12, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, 12A, ordinance number 4046, an ordinance to request to rezone lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition from BG to RG20PS, applicant Freedom Village LLC, Jolene Roberts, general location 1811 Hillcrest Drive. And I'll also read 12A1, request for site plan approval for lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition. And I'll now open up the public hearing and we have Robert back up to the podium.
Robert Griffith, 11440 West Center Road for the applicant. I would just reiterate, the applicant is requesting the site be rezoned from BG to RG20 with a PS overlay with site plan approval and again, the purpose of this is to allow for the development of Freedom Village Senior Living Development. I would also point out that the applicant's rezoning request has been recommended for approval by both the Plan Department and the Plan and Commission and we're here again to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is open, is there anyone here to speak for or against the ordinance to request to rezone lot 7, Tiller's Fourth Edition? Anyone for or against, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and the third reading will be September 7th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Thank you, item 12B, ordinance number 4047, an ordinance to request the rezoning of lots 1 and 2, Herald Square replat 1, being a replat of lot 49, Herald Square from RG50 to RG20 and RG50 for the purpose of single-family residence and care facility for disabled adult. Applicant Sharon Shaduri, general location 8700 South 25th Street. And I'll also read 12B1, request to small subdivision platelots 1 and 2, Herald Square replat 1. And I'm gonna open up the public hearing at this time and I'm also gonna state a conflict of interest on this one, so I'm not gonna join in any conversation. The property being purchased is, is listed by my company, so that would be the reason for the conflict. So, the public hearing is open, is there anyone here to speak for or against the project?
Hi, thank you so much for having me this evening. I just, my name is Sharon Shaduri and I just want to tell you a little bit about Asha's house.
Can you give me an address Sharon, for the record, your address?
My home address?
Yes.
12054 Carpenter Street.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
So what Asha's house is, it's an overnight respite and retreat. I say respite for the adults in a retreat-like setting for their loved ones and I refer to them as clients. And what it is, is, it's a place, it's a time for parents to refresh and for their loved ones to come and be around kids their age and more like a camp, more like a camp. And it would pretty much run for the most part Friday, 3 o'clock to Sunday, 3 o'clock and this, the whole ideal of Asha's house came from my daughter. She passed away two years ago and she was disabled and she was 25 years old, so from birth to 25, I know the hole that needs to be filled and the only thing I want to do is help other parents by filling that hole, giving them a well-deserved break as well as caring and loving their loved ones. So pretty much that's what Asha's house is in a nutshell, it's a seven-bedroom. They can stay the weekend or up to seven, seven days if a family wanted to go on a vacation and wanted to leave them. And like I said, there is indoor and outdoor activities. Inside, there is a theater which will also act as a storm shelter. There is a serenity room or quiet room, sometimes when they get worked up and don't know what to do at all, you have to put them in a quiet place, so it's called a serenity room. And it's, we had a picture of it last time, but it's not here now, so, but anyway, it's a really nice, quiet, calming is what it's supposed to do. It'll have like a fish tank in there, the lighting, just real serene is what it does and it kinda calms you. And then outside, we have a fire pit, we have a raised garden, we have a half-court basketball, volleyball and everything that, everything about Asha's house is, came came, came out of what my daughter needed. She was in a wheelchair, so I'm making sure everything is ADA accessible indoors and out. Um, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it, and I just want to say a quick thank you to Tammy for helping me, helping us to maneuver around this area, which, uh, so I'm familiar with, so I want to thank you personally for that. Um, other than that, that is it, so I'm open for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cook?
Sharon, um, first I'd like to tell you I'm sorry to hear about your daughter.
Thank you.
Um, are you targeting a specific age of?
Eighteen to thirty-four, um, and, uh, two thousand sixteen, we had approximately, um, forty-five thousand five hundred disabled adults in the state of Nebraska, uh, between the ages of eighteen and thirty-four.
And now, and I think you touched on it, but you're gonna put two buildings on this site. One will be?
Asha's House one and Asha's House two, and the first one is gonna go up first, and at the second one, the, the first one will pay for the second one, that's how that will be developed. Oh, and then that one over there, that's my private home, and that's what I wanted to subdivide. I'm, I'm really, uh, very much a hands-on person, so I would like to be close to it. And it will have a six-foot, security is a big, uh, a big concern for me, um, because I, you know, they're very vulnerable. Um, so I have a, I'm planning a six-foot fence, privacy fence, as well as a security gate. Um, and then where you see where that line is, that's where parking will be, and then we got some handicap parking as well.
So will?
Where the power lines are.
So will both buildings, when they're built out, total, just seven overnight bedrooms?
No, then the other one would be another seven.
So it'd be a total of fourteen?
Yeah, yeah, and, and that one might be for, um, I've, I've had a lot of, uh, older people, wish that Asha's House one could be for, for their older, for their loved ones, but I tried to explain that, you know, honoring my daughter is, is gonna come first. So the second one, maybe, but the first one is, um, that's to honor my daughter. She went through a lot in her twenty-five years with, um, numerous brain surgeries, so, um. This is my way of, um, honoring her and helping other parents, like I said, because I know from experience what they need.
And then the second smaller one will be your personal residence?
Yes, mhm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Tammy, I just got a quick question for you, that was a concern, we got an email concern about traffic on, um, Twenty Fifth Street. Did, did, did we have a response for that, like at the Planning Commission or anything about traffic?
From a traffic standpoint, um, neither Public Works nor the Planning Department is concerned with the amount of traffic that this type of essentially residential use will generate. There could be more dense options for this property. It's currently zoned RG fifty, which would allow for fourplexes and would allow for a number of fourplexes, so, um, even that type of development, we wouldn't have any traffic concerns along Twenty Fifth Street, Street.
So, basically, the traffic would be here, would probably be more maybe dropping off a client and then picking them up?
I would think so, and like I said, that's three o'clock Friday till, uh, Sunday, three o'clock.
But also daily, right, Monday through?
Well, if I had, if someone is there for the day, you know, uh, for the seven days or, you know, um, but I, I'm just thinking, like with my daughter, there was, she went to day service during the day. Um, it wasn't a good fit for her, so she didn't really stay, it wasn't a good fit for her. Um, but, so if I have someone that's there for a week, then yeah, they will be there, but they're not going in and out because their parents have dropped them off, and?
I'm just talking pretty, pretty much vehicle traffic, someone dropping them off and picking them up.
Um.
For the day's service.
Friday drop off and then pick up on Sunday, but other than that, they're there.
Okay.
Is, is that what, am I answering your question?
Yeah, I'm just trying, what I'm trying to say is, you're saying that some people will stay there over the weekend.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
But there might be people that just come for the day.
That is true, yes.
So that would just require maybe someone being dropped off in the morning, picked up in the afternoon?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. And Tammy, you said, like duplexes could go here?
Up to fourplexes, yes, and you could have a number of them. And again, from a, from an engineering standpoint, this is not gonna be a large chip, trip generator. Um, Twenty Fifth Street is handled, is adequately, um, engineered to handle this type of traffic flow.
Okay, and one last question.
Sure.
The people that, your clients, they're not driving, they're being brought by someone and dropped off?
Oh, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Welch?
Don't go anywhere, Sharon. Um, and again, sorry for the passing of your daughter, and what a great way to honor her and what she went through. Um, how many employees are you looking at for this property?
Well, if, if that depends on, if we have a full house, which would be seven, because it's, it's seven bedrooms. So if we have a full house, then you've got two full-time, two part-time, and then volunteers.
Okay, and do they, but they're not working twenty-four hour shifts, you would have them change every eight hours, so you'd have the rotation?
Actually, what I was thinking, still working things out like that, but what I was thinking was I would have them, at first I did, you know, I was thinking maybe the, the twelve-hour shift.
Okay, and will, that, the parking for them is gonna be like around the back type of thing?
Um, yes, if you would like, um, see, I wasn't able to turn this in before the deadline, but I only picked it up today, so if you would like, I can show you just, um, a little outline of the parking from the landscape, would you like to see that?
Yeah, please, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, I don't mind.
Here we got the waterfall feature.
Okay.
And we got Asha's House one, two, and as you can see here, we got, you know, we have the, I don't have my readers. Um, that's his prairie, okay, and moat line. We have a, uh, that's the labor, you know, that's not what I want, I want these, basketball courts.
Oh, oh, really?
Yeah, should be, yep.
But you were asking about parking, sorry, I'm Sherri Tyler, I work with Brookshire Hathaway Pool Services, Ambassador, I'm the representative for the purchase of the property for Sharon, and so I've kind of been looking for Sharon for a long time now, trying to find the right place for this. Um, here is the parking for, um, the employees, and if a parent would have to stay, and here is the handicap parking across.
So show me where, um, Twenty Fifth Street is on this.
It's all here.
Right here, okay, all right. And so that goes deep into, into the area, okay. And so the employees would be parking?
Over here.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's right here.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, and, um, Tammy, we had, um, there was another lady that wanted to do that similar, something similar on Virginia Street. Th- this is way better suited for that type of, um, opportunity, correct?
Correct. You have Twenty Fifth Street, which is a major arterial, and like I stated previously, it's engineered to handle traffic. Additionally, their access is gonna be directly from Twenty Fifth Street, there's not going to be any access into the adjacent neighborhoods.
Okay, perfect, what a great idea. Thank, thank you for presenting it.
Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audi- audience wanting to speak regarding twelve B or twelve B one? Please come forward. Anybody wanting to speak regarding twelve B or twelve B one, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, and, uh, council have any other questions, comments? Okay. That third reading will be September seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P M here in the council chambers. So we have twelve C, ordinance number four zero four eight, to amend Article One, Chapter twenty-eight of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending twenty-eight dash seven and adding a new section, twenty-eight dash fifteen, regarding the declaration of nuisance and abatement procedure for unlawful storage of building materials on streets and sidewalks. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Sure.
Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero four eight, an ordinance to amend Article One, Chapter twenty-eight of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending section twenty-eight dash seven and adding a new section, twenty-eight dash fifteen, regarding the declaration of nuisance and abatement procedure for unlawful storage of building materials on streets and sidewalks, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, I'm gonna add, uh, twelve D as? Okay, all right, we're gonna open up twelve C for public hearing. So is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding twelve C, for or against? Public hearing is open for twelve C, if anybody would like to speak. Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be September seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Twelve D, ordinance number four zero four nine, and ordinance, an ordinance to adopt the annual appropriations bill. And also, twelve D one, resolution number two zero two one dash two eight, a resolution to set the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two property tax request. So, um, Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero four nine, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date.
Okay, I will open up the public hearing for twelve D. Is there, and twelve D one, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding twelve D or twelve D one? Please come forward. Public hearing is open for twelve D or twelve D one, if anyone would like to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. The third reading will be September seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four zero five zero, an ordinance to amend section twelve dash five seven through twelve dash five eight of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to fireworks. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero five zero, an ordinance to amend section twelve dash fifty-seven through twelve dash eighty-five of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to fireworks, to repeal all previous versions of the same, to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Um, second reading, public hearing will be September seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, recommendation to approve event application for Premier Sport Village to host an outdoor family festival with live music on Sunday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, from two P M to eight thirty P M at one four four zero five Harlan Lewis Road. And I will open item fourteen up for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding item fourteen? For or against? Anyone wanting to speak regarding item fourteen A, please come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item fourteen A.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments or discussion? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Okay, fourteen A one, recommend approval of a special fireworks application for Subia Enzalone to provide a fireworks display for the Premier Sports Village Outdoor Family Festival on August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, at approximately nine P M, for ten to twelve minutes. Do we have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item fourteen A one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Comments or questions?
I have a comment, Mayor. Um, I just saw this on the agenda, so I apologize. Um, as read, it's nine P M, but the event that was just approved ends at eight thirty P M. So I was just confirming on the cover sheet that the fireworks were actually from eight P M to eight fifteen P M per the application. So we would need a motion to amend for the fireworks to be eight to eight fifteen P M, if somebody's willing to do that, to conform with the application.
You said, wait, eight to?
Eight fifteen P M.
Eight to eight fifteen P M, yeah. Um, so then I moved to amend item fourteen A one, uh, so instead of saying?
Nine P M.
Nine P M, um, it'll be from fireworks, will go from eight to eight fifteen P M.
I'll second that.
So is that an adjustment to the original motion?
Yes.
And councilwoman Welch seconded, so we have a motion by Burns, seconded by Welch to approve, losing my numbers here, fourteen A one um, with the fireworks being, uh, set off between eight o'clock and eight fifteen P M that evening. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item fourteen B, recommend approval of application from Prem- Premier Sports Village to?
Oh, hold on, you have to vote as amended. You have to go back to the original.
We just voted on the amendment.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we adjusted though. Okay, so that, that was a vote on the amendment, everybody understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a motion by Burns, seconded by Welch to approve fourteen A one as amended. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Fourteen B, recommend approval of application from Premier Sports Village to host a music concert on Friday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, from four P M to ten P M at one four four zero five Harlan Lewis Road. And I will open up fourteen B for public hearing, if there's anyone here to speak for or against item fourteen B. Please come forward.
Hello?
Please state your name and address.
Alley French, forty-two thirteen North one hundred seventy-second Street. I'm here today to ask that you guys approve it, and we have several of our hosts here, if you guys have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding fourteen B, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, and do we have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item fourteen B.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch.
Mayor, if I may, um, this application has been reviewed by legal and also administration. Um, and it would be, um, our position that it is denied tonight, ultimately it's up to the city council, however. Um, there's a lease purchase agreement on this property, and it specifically identifies the eligible uses under that lease. Um, the event that you just approved prior to this one, we do believe is in compliance with the lease. It's a family festival targeted towards the youth ac- youth activities. Um, whereas this one is a music concert, um, more targeted towards adults. Um, there's a flyer attached to the agenda packet, um, that talks about it being? That talks about it being a government outreach um, event. Um, and it's our position that it is not in compliance with the use of that property. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
What are the funds being used for, do you know, is it for the baseball village itself, or is it uh, being subleased out?
I don't know what the funds for the concert are being used for, I would imagine any profit would. Be used for it, I don't know if, well, the public hearing is closed, I don't know if the applicant has a position on that. But the use for the music concert is what I'm concerned about.
Councilman Cook?
Could you, you probably already did it, could you repeat? Like where it says the family oriented be okay, but not a.
Yeah, so the event that you just approved, um, it's my understanding from the application, then just also through conversations. That that's a family festival targeted more towards the families that are using the facilities for ball games and activities. Uh, whereas. And it is open to the public, but it's more family friendly use of the ball fields, you know, bouncy houses, fun type of a thing. Whereas this one is a um, an event that is advertised as a freedom festival. It is advertised in the. Um, is basically a music concert, um, and it's a government outreach type events. And so in, in reviewing that, that is the difference between this application versus the family festival application.
Bree, could you speak to the lease agreement too between us and Premier Sports Village, there's very specific requirements?
Yeah, so there was a lease purchase agreement that was approved by this council on October twentieth, two thousand twenty. And the use under paragraph five says that Premier Sports Village. Shall use the property for the sole and exclusive purpose of establishing and maintaining a six field athletic complex. And thereafter constructing an indoor multipurpose facility. That includes but is not limited to hosting athletic trainings, apparel shop, concession stands, office, shelter, restrooms. Dance studio, coffee shop and a fitness gym for public or private use as the property during the lease. So it's, it's very um, on point with the actual use of the property. Um, the reason we didn't speak about the, the prior one is because it is connected back to the use of the property. In, in our opinion, in our review, whereas this one is much different than those uses.
So public hearing is closed, but can a council member ask the applicant? Questions, specific?
Need to be opened back up.
I'll make motion.
I'll second that.
I'll make mo- I'll make a motion, we open it up.
I'll second.
For public hearing.
I'll second that again.
By Cook, second by Welch to open uh, fourteen B up for public hearing, reopen public hearing, um, any comments, questions? Please vote.
If we're opening back up, public comment, may I make?
Hold on just one second.
Absolutely.
We're just waiting for one vote to register. Councilman Cook, did you? There it goes. The vote is um, five to one with Councilman Stinson voting no, is that correct, Bob? Oh, you voted yes? Okay, so the vote is six yeses, motion carried.
Okay, so public hearing is now open, so if you would state your name and address again?
Sure, Alley French forty two thirteen, North one hundred seventy second Street. Um, I did want to add, this is actually an open to the public community event, we do intend on having a section for children, we will have blow up inflatables. Um, we do have a beer garden that will be fenced off and maintained away from where the children will have their ability to play and run around, we do also have vendors open to the public. For them to be able to come and um, you know, share whatever they may have, we have somebody who's coming, who's gonna be bringing their local cookie business, which is super exciting, so it is. Open and available for anybody who would like to join us to participate.
Bree?
Have you applied for um, a liquor license for that beer garden yet?
Uh, Tim, you have, you have to give me an address.
State your name and your address.
My name is Tim Davis, I'm at eleven oh thirteen Lafayette Plaza in Omaha. Um, we have not, because I was going to speak to you folks about that, because originally we were going to use um, local breweries, because we wanted to keep things as local as possible. And all of them have uh, catering licenses, but up until about yesterday, um, we had just found out that all of them are not going to be participating. So I wanted to get it clear from you guys if we would even have time to even be able to apply for one of those. Um, because I was told that we weren't able to.
Okay, um, I mean, let's see what happens here, I guess, with the event tonight, and then let's chat after the meeting if you have time on that item.
Uh, just real quick, Matthew Barrows, nine oh nine Hopkins, uh, Ward one. And uh, I just wanted to say that this is absolutely a family event. Um, the people, uh, dear friends that I've reached out to and invited them, uh, they were like absolutely wonderful, great, I'll bring the kids. So this is absolutely a family event, um, there will be activities for kids at this event as well. Um, it's, I mean, we're just, we're celebrating freedom, I mean, that's what the theme is about. And um, I think you guys, you guys all have a very interesting position being in government at this time in history. And I think freedom is something that is, should be celebrated by everyone, it's not a partisan issue, it's not, it's not scary, it's, we love freedom, right? We're Americans, so this is just, this is just an outdoor festival to just celebrate being free men and free women. In, in the greatest country in the world. And not be fleeing on a, on a tarmac trying to get out of the country or something like that, right? This is a great country, am I right? Don't we love freedom, am I right? I know, I know you, I know a lot of you on this board, I know you like freedom. And this is a family event, and if there's not gonna be alcohol there, who cares? I don't care, I don't need to drink to have a good time, I can celebrate freedom without alcohol. So however this goes down, it's great, just please let us, please let us enjoy it. And as a, and as a resident of Bellevue, and I, and I've, and I've come to you guys before here, I'm sorry about being dressed the way that I am, I was just at the gym across the street. Um, but I've come to you guys before telling you how much I love this city, how much I love this downtown area, and how much I wanna see Bellevue get revitalized, just like all of you guys do. And I think this is a great opportunity to bring people from all over the metro, from Iowa, from who knows where, to come here, enjoy a festival, get. Be in Bellevue, probably bring business to nearby businesses, fill up at the gas station, whatever, I think this is a win for everyone. I really do, and I, I, I can't see any reason why, why you to know, that's, that's it, thank you very much.
Um, if I could add real fast, I know it's labeled as a music festival, but um, out of all of our confirmed uh, entertainers and performers, we're gonna have. Only one of them is actually a music performer, our other speakers are literally just that. This is just an open area for people to come together at the end of an event, here's some things from speakers that are on nationally, on the national stage. And we have one performer that's gonna perform at nine o'clock at the end of the event, so the, we don't expect kids to even be there for the music portion of the event.
Yeah, um, can you address the, any funds or proceeds where they? If you make any money on it, is it, where's it, where's the funds go, is it to the baseball village or the pre beer village?
No, the profits that we will raise out of this, it's a fun, it's gonna end up basically being a fundraising festival. Um, for a organization that we've just started here um, in Nebraska, so it'll help with considering it is a government overreach kind of, or outreach kind of event. Um, it'll be going to help with some campaigns that we will be endorsing or supporting into the next year.
Good, thank you. Bree?
Can you um? I guess explain to me in your own words. Um, how you feel that a, and I'm just reading off the flyer here, a freedom festival event. Freedom Rally USA, Nebraskans Against Government Overreach in Nebraska Freedom Coalition Freedom Festival. Deal, like, how does that work with, how does that tie back to like a baseball field and kids playing baseball and the purpose? Of what the lease is for? Does that make sense, that was a long question. I guess, how does that work together?
Uh, there was just a personal relationship with the owner that leases it and he was comfortable and wanted to give us a space to. Come together as a community and with our friends and families and enjoy our freedom.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yes, Paul, oh, sorry, I can't do that.
That's my job. Councilman Cook?
Um, I'm gonna sort of hit off what Bree just said. It says Nebraskans Against Government Overreach. I mean, it seems pretty far out there, I mean, I think. Anybody conservative has some points, but. You know, you're sort of. To me, it, it almost sounds radical.
Would it make you guys feel more comfortable if that was removed from the flyer and the marketing?
Well, what I'm trying to get to is trying to understand what your event will tr- will be, well.
The reason that that's on there is simply because many of the members of that group would like, were interested and excited about the Freedom Festival. But that won't be pertinent to the event itself that day, it's just one of the organizations that are affiliated.
What is your experience as far as putting these things together? Events like this, can you refer to other events that you were heavily involved in as far as organizing, cause there're quite a lot of work to put these.
Yeah, we did just recently host a fundraiser at the Marriott that went very swimmingly, we've, we've put together several events, this will be our first festival that we are putting together.
Is there any, I, I don't see any of, I mean, obviously the city owns that land. And so we have concerns with that and the fact that we have a contract.
Absolutely.
That we think doesn't fit this purpose. And so then if something sour goes back, goes on down there, if something would get out of control. It probably puts us in some liability.
I believe that we purchased the one day insurance that was needed.
Yeah, we're gonna have.
I understand, but as we all know. If you're gonna go after someone, you're gonna go after deep pockets and usually it's not an individual, usually it's a government, government, government that gets stuck with it. But my concern is, is your experience of putting these together and where this could lead to. Um, I don't see any of the owners, I shouldn't say owners, you see a lot of the owners, we're all citizens owning, but I don't see any of the group that's leasing this. From the city and hear support, think it's a great idea, now maybe they, maybe they think that way, but. I think it's a violation of this contract. And I think it could be done at other locations.
It can't, unfortunately, there's nowhere else available, you guys are our last hope and I, I mean, we're talking about freedom here, people.
Uh, you're, 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 you're acting like we don't believe in freedom, we, we believe in freedom too. And we believe in government has to operate also, that's why we're all sitting here. But my concern is, is when I see a poster or I, what's on our thing talking about Nebraskans Against. Government. Government overreach.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's sort of.
Against government.
Throws a flag up for me.
Right.
Um.
Okay.
I think I'm very conservative and stuff too, and if I read that, I'd probably be a little concerned about going down there. To, as far as what's going, I just think it violates our contract, I, and, and, and I think Premier Village, the lease, the people leasing it from us. Should have probably talked to our attorney.
That would have been nice.
And got, well, but I think that's part on you too. Uh, to, and see what their input would have been, and maybe we would not be here, now I don't know how this council's gonna vote.
You mean, speak to the attorney?
Well, I think, I think if, I think if Premier Sports.
The city and the city took it upon themselves.
Okay.
And they, they didn't ask even get none of.
They had no problem with the lease.
Actually contacted me, like, the attorney.
Okay.
Never contacted.
Well, maybe I'm overstepping.
Um, we did.
I mean, we could have cleared a lot of this up and possibly not even been here with a simple phone call.
Um, we did receive communication from Mr. Johnson, the one that's leasing the property, um, I actually wrote him a very detailed letter, um, I think at the end of July. That talked about other things regarding rent, but I specifically outlined my concerns with this, I quoted the use. And said that we did not believe that it was in compliance with the lease, and Mr. Johnson received that letter well in advance. And I can honestly tell you, I was surprised to even see this application on tonight after sending that letter.
And that says a lot, um, for me, that I think people were given the indication that this didn't meet the contract that we have with Premier Sports.
So why wasn't I told this when I've been speaking to the city multiple times, that I've spoken to the clerk?
Well.
If you're surprised it's on here, it's because you guys have poor communication. That could have easily gone back to me, I, you guys have my phone number, you have my email.
Well, I.
I mean, it could have easily, and again, the county, the city attorney could have simply forwarded that email to me. And we could have bypassed this whole issue.
I think someone else could have forwarded that email or letter to you also. The person that you were asking to use.
But if you get this in front of you. It could easily be like, hey, we've told him this, I mean, I, I do these events on quite a. Regular basis, not on this scale, but I just brought in somebody from California for five weeks who toured the state of Nebraska. I put that together, I did all the communications. I have no problem emailing you and saying, hey, we have this issue, do you have an issue with this? City attorney, you could have easily, again.
Our client is uh, Premier Baseball Village, um, and as far as I'm, I know, I don't know if there's any.
He's the applicant too.
And he's the applicant, and he's not here, but you're stating this money goes towards something totally different, so to me. It sounds like it's a sublease, which I'm not sure that's even. In the, that's a violation itself, so. For us to contact you, we don't have that duty.
And that's fine, guys, we just wish we'd known earlier, because we're happy to comply with.
Yeah.
Whatever you guys have, but the communication was never delivered to us.
The city could have easily told me that.
It was, it was delivered to Mr. Johnston.
Okay, well, then we will speak with him and we do appreciate your guys' time, again, if we'd had the communication, we would have been able to prepare that for you guys and know that this wasn't going to work.
I apologize that that was not, um, it, it was communicated to Mr. Johnson, you know, we appreciate you coming out tonight, I think Mr. Preister has something to say.
Sure.
Um, but I guess regardless of what the vote is tonight, it's not, I guess, at least in my opinion, a vote against freedom or a vote against. Your cause or your mission or your views.
The lease problem.
Exactly, it's the lease issue, um, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Yep, absolutely.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to two aspects of the lease issue, I also see a, a conflict there because. Did I hear you say that the funds that are raised are going to support certain candidates for elective office?
Um, I was unsure that, I believe it's going to the Nebraska Freedom Coalition, which is a political action committee, but it doesn't mean it's going specifically to a candidate.
Okay.
Yes.
And I think on government property, for us to endorse or support any political organization or candidate.
Right.
We're talking about freedom, but we're talking about responsibility. And for us to put ourselves in that kind of a compromising position on public property. Is against our constitution. So I think beyond the lease, this is a much bigger argument and a much bigger concern that's gonna cause me to not vote for it. Not because I don't respect freedom, but because I respect the constitution and the responsibility as an elected official that goes along with that in this case.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Welch?
I just wanna make sure I'm real clear on something, it's not that we're voting against your organization and what you wanna do. We're voting against it because it violates the lease agreement, am I correct on that, Bree?
Well, I can't tell you how to vote, so it would be your vote.
I understand.
But yes, that, that would be my position that it's, and, and that's kind of what I'm hearing from everybody up here, that it's not against the cause.
It has nothing to do with them, their, what they want to do personally, their beliefs, any of that type of thing, it's just, it's not. The right location because of the lease agreement that we have.
Yes.
Can I, can I get some clarification, Ms. Bree, please? Um, wh- what is different? And can we, is there anything we can do to change this to make it more aligned? With the event you just approved just ten minutes ago? Because ours also has bouncy houses, ours also is for anyone open to the public, family, is there anything we can do? To alter this event or change this event in any way that would somehow make it aligned with what made this other event go through?
Can we donate the money away?
Not this one.
In my, in my legal opinion, no, there's not.
What, then ma'am, what makes this different than the one that you just approved?
In my opinion and my understanding of the one that was just approved based off of my conversations with Mr. Johnston and also his event application. That event was specifically targeted towards the families that are using the complex for the sports. And the money that he was going to get off of that was also then going back to the development and to the sports complex. Um, it was targeted towards that use of it being an athletic.
Okay.
Facility, and so that is the difference in my opinion.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate you guys being here.
Absolutely, we appreciate you guys' time very much.
Thank you, I still have a public hearing open, so is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding fourteen B, please come forward? Anybody wanting to speak regarding fourteen B, please come forward? Seeing nobody, I'm gonna clo- close the public hearing. Seeing nobody, I'm gonna close, close the public hearing. Uh, any further discussion? We have a, a motion by Burns, second by Walsh. Do we have any further discussion?
The motion is to approve?
To approve.
And so for clarification purposes, if you vote yes, then it approves the event. If you vote no, then the event is not approved.
So please vote.
All voted no, motion failed.
Alright, thanks for coming out. Fourteen D. Request to amend the comprehensive plan to include the growth management plan of the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency, applicant city of Bellevue. Also read fourteen D one, resolution number two zero two one dash two seven. Approve and authorize mayor to sign the two thousand twenty one comprehensive plan. And I will open up the public hearing for both of those items, fourteen D and fourteen D one. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding those, please come forward. Public hearing is open for fourteen D and fourteen D one. Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. So I will need a motion on fourteen D one. Councilman Stinson?
Make motion, we approve fourteen D one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item fourteen E, request to declare as blighted and substandard lots four and five Edward Warren addition. And tax lot H two located in the southwest quarter of section sixteen. Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth PM Sarpy County. Applica Imperial Homes LLC, general location three five zero one Chandler Road West. I'm also gonna read fourteen E one, resolution number two zero two one dash two nine. Approved to declare lots four and five Edward Warren addition and tax lot H two as blighted and substandard. And authorize the mayor to sign. And I will open up both those items fourteen E and fourteen E one for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Elizabeth Sevcek, uh, my address is five eight one one Clearwater Drive in Fort Calhoun, Nebraska. Uh, I'm here. On behalf of the applicant Imperial Homes LLC, as is the principal Tim Tran, who is a part of Imperial Homes LLC. We've made this application because it's our, my client's desire to really improve that area. Along West Chandler Road at about thirty to thirty sixth street. Uh, it hasn't seen development in a long time. It's about ten and a half acres of vacant ground. That at the back of the application, uh, there's a map of the property itself that shows you what that looks like. You know, in this area, there, the age of the homes, the average age as well, over forty years, this area hasn't seen a. Lot of development right along there. And in fact, um, two of the properties that are included in here are significantly blighted and substandard. There is one property that's missing part of its roof. It hasn't been shingled in quite a while. And these properties are very rundown. So. You know, the goal of this ultimately is that in order to induce development and really kind of get this going. It's going to take a lot of public, public infrastructure through this vacant land that doesn't presently exist. The cost of doing that. Is cost prohibitive to pretty much any development on the scale that would be needed for this uh, area. And we are looking at, you know, property that has, um. Actually, the structures, the statute talks about forty years, um, but the structures in that area are more sixty to seventy five years old. Um, and older. So, you know, we looked at a number of factors as far as. This particular area where this property has located it and it does meet a number of the factors for blighted and substandard. Including the fact that, um, for this census tract, the unemployment rate is seven point one percent versus. Which is more, well, more than a hundred and twenty percent of the state's unemployment rate of three point three percent. The average rage, age of the residential structures in and around the blighted area is more than forty years old. Like I said, most of these. Structures are more sixty to seventy five years old and many of them in significant deterioration. Um, and then the per capita income for this census tract is twenty seven thousand, a hundred and eight dollars. Which is lower than the average per capita income of Bellevue itself, which is twenty thou, twenty nine thousand eight hundred and twenty two dollars. So the other part that contributes to this is just the safety of coming on and off Chandler Road and for the. Um, structures around it, you know, if this were developed piecemeal and one at a time, you have the potential of. A lot of people needing access. When you aggregate this together and develop it, um, as part of a plan. We're going to control that access and have just two entry points and a horseshoe type shape. Coming in and out of the development. That way we have uh, more controlled access to the homes that would go in there. So the goal here really is to, um, motivate development, bring this area up and hopefully that would stimulate. Development around it as well as remove or rehab those dilapidated structures that are currently existing right there. And really kind of improve this for the neighbors who are out there. I know there's some neighbors who have spent money on their house. And appreciate the area. And I think they would, um, hopefully like to see this improved. And see some of the less desirable, um, structures maybe go away in favor of. The improvement that this development would bring. We're here right now just on the blighted and substandard designation. Um, obviously, as you can see, my client has put together. Kinda, um, working with engineers, putting together a. Uh, proposal of what this is gonna look like or what we would hope it would look like. And those. Portions would come at a later time, both in application for TIF and approving the uh, development itself. But as you can see, just to give you an idea of what ultimately we're looking towards doing, and what ultimately our goal is, is about thirty six. Uh, single family homes through there, um, a couple duplexes, about eight. And then. Doing kind of split entry or raised ranch in about the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand price range. So. More targeted towards an entry level home of three bedrooms, two baths, sixteen hundred to seventeen hundred square feet. And, um, integrating those properties that are dilapidated by either raising them. Or rehabbing them and integrating them in some way into what is going to happen through this area as well. Tim, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, yes, I, I, I may ask, so good evening, mayors and council meetings, uh, council member. My name is Tin Tran, um, I'm with the Imperial Home as a project manager. Um, so I'm here to, um, uh, present some of the, um, their proposal. That we put together for the meeting today. So as Lee's already said, most of them already. So. Here's the duplex that we are thinking of, um, putting on this one as well. Um, the duplex on this one will be around two hundred to two eighty thousands. Um, so there, there will be a mix of the duplex into this complex. Uh, not everything is, um, uh, duplex. So I think we are talking about eight, eight unit of. Eight duplex and sixteen, um, unit in total, uh, of the duplex. Um, also there is, uh, uh. A timeline, uh, some of the interior that we are kind of thinking, uh, right now. And I have the, my architecture here. Um, if you have any further question on this, we can, um, have a questions and answer. But this is the interior, um, we are looking at on this duplex and a single home. Um, also the, uh, timelines, uh, if this get approved it. Then we will, uh, get started on the, uh, projects, uh, right away. Been, we've been working with TD two, uh, development, um, for past three months. So, uh, the timeline for this one will be probably somewhere around May, June of next year. To have the model homes, uh, erected, uh, and, and show to the customer. If I may to go back just a little bit, uh, this is the, um. Development, uh, a layout that TD two engineering is, is providing it to us. Um. So we do their due diligence, uh, on this one and will find no issue with this. We. You know, the TD two, most of the, most of the, uh, time is doing all our engineering work on this. And they don't, they don't see any issue with, uh, either utilities or any kind of, uh, issue with this. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, obviously, um, those stages are later to come and we're working with the planning department and all that is in due time. Right now, we're just really trying to get at the heart of what, um, the statutes were for as far as tax increment financing and the blighted. And substandard, which is to promote development in a place where there hasn't been a lot of new development. And to remove that blight where there is some existing blight and hopefully stimulate that continued, um, improvement in the area as well. So. Um, you know, all in due time, but if you have any questions, obviously we're here to answer what questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, Tim, thank you. I appreciate you contacting me early on and answering many questions that I had then. A couple that have come up, uh, since, uh, you have. Talked to both of the owners of the single family homes, I understand, that would be a part of this condemnation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and they're amenable to a sale and to this development happening?
That's correct. So, um, Mary, uh, with us here sees leading that effort. Um, so we did talk to the two owners. And we are in the, uh, process of give them the, um, offer price. So the plan for those one, as you can see on this picture here, is those, uh, pink, uh, colors. So those houses Lee's, uh, mentioned that was very rundown, um, you know, even some, one of the houses missing the roof for many, many years. Uh, so we, we are planning to, uh, remodel it a hundred percent. So. Either do it, uh, take it down or, or remodel it to, to up to ninety percent of them. So we'll take, we'll take everything down to their structures and rebuild them or remodel them. That is the plan, is the current plan right now.
Okay, and these are not rental homes you would be developing and then selling them to individual homeowners and buyers?
So there is a, a, a several, uh, options that we can, can do on this one. Uh, either remodeling, which we are buying those two, remodeling and sell it back to the market. Uh, or demolish it, uh, and replace the, or integrate it into that ten acres lot. And, uh, making a duplex or, or single homes there.
Okay.
That would be in discussion right now.
Still being decided, but the, the other homes, the duplexes and the single family split levels would be sold. They would be built and then sold, not, it wouldn't be a rental development.
That's correct. There's no rental. This one would be, uh, a subdivision type. So we'll, we'll plan to build one duplex and one single home and then, um. Making it as a model homes and then we'll sell those, the, for the public.
Okay. And as I look at this map, I see the roads coming off Chandler Road there at the top of the picture. And coming down and then it looks like where the detention pond is at the south end. The road dead ends. And so I'm assuming if. There were ever anything built to the east, further up to thirty second street. That would be where probably the planning department would have it go if that ever happened. But I'm, I'm gonna ask Tammy that in a minute. But the question I would have you. Uh, consider, there is a driveway, a gravel driveway that's on. The end there on the east side of, of what you're developing. And that owner's gotta drive all the way down that gravel road down into their property. If that road could be brought around so that owner could use the paved road. Maybe they would give you that extra twenty five or thirty feet in exchange. For connecting a paved driveway that now you or somebody else, the city will end up plowing. Rather than them having to plow. So you don't have to answer that necessarily, but. I just pose it as a possibility to you to square that off and to eliminate a gravel road. That's, I think, just a private driveway.
Correct, that's a private driveway. So incorporating that, um, I mean, we could certainly talk with the owner about their desires for that and. Um, see if we can't bump everything over if they would want to tie in and go that way as well. So, um, I mean, we can talk to him. I, I haven't seen. The feasibility of the grade and everything. Obviously, the engineers are much more familiar with, uh, what every, all the aspects going on over there, but. Uh, certainly something we can talk to them about and see. Uh, talked about the owner and the engineer.
Just a thought, and I have no investment either way, but it would give. Somebody else maybe a, a better access in and out. And then Ms. Palm, if, if I could ask you. Uh, you always like to line up streets so that they cross correctly. And so does Public Works and Access and all of those things. It, is that part of the conf? And, and this isn't what we're approving. This is just on the TIF. But because it's here, I'm, I'm just wanting to get some clarification on that road.
Yes, just a couple points of clarification. First of all, in regards to your prior question about whether the other homeowners were aware. They did sign the blight and substandard application that was made to our office. So, um, yes, they are aware. We made sure of that when that application came in. Um, in regards to what you're seeing as far as a plat. I would caution that that's just conceptual at this point. Um, several pre-application meetings have occurred between the applicant. And his engineer and, uh, public works and planning staff. This is a unique property.
Yeah.
And, um, for all of the reasons that have been pointed out, you have, um, significant slope, you have drainage issues. And you have the very unique parcel that is next to it that not only is it a private drive. But there's actually a finger of land of that lot that goes all the way to Chandler Road. Um, so. The challenge for staff and for the applicant's engineer is how should those streets lay out? And yes, can that parcel somehow be incorporated to the east? It's my understanding that that property owner is not necessarily interested in any type of connection, but. I assume that those conversations will continue. So at this point, we have to move forward, um, with the assumption that that cannot be incorporated. But having said that, obviously we plan for the future. Um, so throughout this application process and these pre-application meetings. We will look at the best way to incorporate that in the future, um, assuming that that will happen at some point down the road. And Public Works has taken a look at, um, access points onto West Chandler Road. Um, those will be further, um, defined as we move through the process, but that, that has been a conversation.
Good, I, I appreciate that. And it is not an easy site to develop and it's right in the city and. These homes would make a nice addition there, uh, if we can work out any of the challenges to it. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to the development and I'm looking at options. Tammy, what's the prior use? This has been sitting empty, uh, in my lifetime. There's never been anything built on it. But it has had uses. Uh, what do we know about those prior uses?
Not a lot, um. I know that the applicant has done some research through his engineer, uh, to make sure. You know, what potentially is underneath the soil, to make sure that, um, all avenues have been pursued, that due diligence has been done. So far, everything kind of checks out okay. Again, there'll be some challenges with slope and drainage, but to my knowledge, yes. It, there's been nothing developed on this. Um, from a planning standpoint. It would be nice to finally have some development. I know this property has been for sale for a while. Numerous people have looked at it because of the development challenges. We haven't seen any applications up till this point. numerous people have looked at it because of the development challenges, we haven't seen any applications up till this point.
Okay, thank you, I noticed four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, about forty-five thousand an acre, uh, it's not my business, and I'm not a real estate agent, but I might negotiate with the seller and see if you could get that down a little.
It was on the market for seven-hundred thousand.
It was.
Can I get both of you guys to sign in while you're standing there too?
Go. Yeah, and thank you very much.
Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, so, um, and I don't know if the applicant or Tammy can answer this, um, but right now, where that retention pond location is, that's not tonight is just for TIF, I understand that, but that's kind of a proposal, it's not been fine-tuned yet, correct?
Um, I, I would say what you're seeing is still conceptual, it's nothing that's been submitted to my office, again, those conversations will continue to happen, so what shakes out in a final format in front of you guys, I'm not sure yet at this point.
And any idea where those duplexes are gonna go? Are they gonna go on that east side along that road, you're thinking, on the backside, what, I mean, conceptually?
Yeah, so, i- it will be on the uh, east or north corners, so.
Okay, and then, when you were, when you showed the slide of the timeline, that was a little different than what you were saying, so I wanted to make sure, 'cause you said that the model home would be possibly built by summer of next year, and that said that building wouldn't start till the end of next year, so I'm a little confused.
So, the, the land development's gonna basically take about six to eight m- uh, months from now?
Can you go to that slide on that timeframe, please? 'Cause it says that saleable home to customers not till, is that December of twenty-twenty-two?
Correct, so it will take us, um, it will take us six months or for the engineering at this time, the TD two, to develop that land, putting the sewer line, water line, utility, whatnot, um, so that will take about six months. And then, you know, we have to build the model homes on top of that when they finish, and that will be around December of that, of the next year.
Okay, so we're talking that the model home's not gonna be done probably till the end of next year?
That's correct.
Okay.
End of next year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Correct.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, mayor, Tammy, real quick, there you showed those two homes in the paint, the, is that involved in the TIF financing, or is that just something they're negotiating separately?
That would be part of the blight and substandard application, so yeah, so if, if you approve the blight and substandard designation, that would be TIF-eligible.
Okay, thank you, and also, just a question for you, sir, I, I've never heard of Imperial Homes, could you tell me a bit, a little bit about your business and what maybe some of the things you've done in the Omaha Bellevue area?
Sure, absolutely, so, uh, it's, you see right there, Imperial Homes is uh, pretty new, uh, we are about five years in a, in the business, but we are more than, have more than twenty years plus in remodeling, so it, it lasts, in the previous five years, we did about uh, seven uh, homes. So, some of the custom home that you see over there, that one is six-hundred-and-fifty, the white and the black one on top. So, the second one, uh, on the left, down on the left, that was a model homes around six-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we sold uh, two years ago. And the one to the uh, bottom right is the one we are gonna be finished in uh, a week, so the client's gonna be moving in, in a week or so. So, uh, we have a lot of experience in remodeling and custom build, uh, so this will be gonna be a cookie cutter, as should I say, uh, it's gonna be one house, and it's gonna be replicated through the whole subdivision, so there will be no custom homes at this time. If we are, uh, building a first one, the second one will be a little bit, uh, you know, the same or, or a little bit option, but not a lot, like a, a super custom home-to-home is, is not.
So, you haven't had a, you haven't built like a neighborhood, what you're doing here, you haven't done that?
Correct.
You said?
That is correct, um.
I'll just add to that, in that, um, my client's been working with Thompson, Dresen, and Dorner, who um, our firm, Croker Huck, works with law sanitarian improvement districts, which do uh, large developments of uh, residential homes, and so TD two has had a lot of input on doing this and costs and expenses and all that sort of stuff, so, you know, TD two has a lot of knowledge just from their other developments in doing this type of neighborhood well on scales larger than, than what we're talking about here, so from that perspective, they have sought out, you know, um, professionals who are engaged in neighborhood developments like this uh, as well to help them along in this process too, so from that perspective, but from you know, and then they've got the historical, the knowledge from themselves of having built homes, both custom and then um, rehabbing, so.
Have you?
Don't know if you have more to add, but.
Have you ever built a home in Bellevue?
Uh, no, we have not. So, most of our homes were some Pappillians and Omar.
We're better to work with.
That's what I heard.
And, and when you have built homes, I mean, I, I, I don't know anything about you, so I'm not saying this to be negative, but has the process with the city and everything permits and doing things and hitting timelines and everything, no problem?
Uh, we don't see that as issue.
No, I mean, with the homes you've built.
No problem.
No problem?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I have a public hearing is still open on fourteen s- fourteen E and fourteen E one. So, if, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak regarding those, please come forward. State your name and address and sign in, please.
Uh, Greg Sorenson, uh, seventy-seven twenty-five South Thirty-sixth Street. Um, my, our property butts, will butt directly to the uh, west of this new development. Our house is less than ten years old, I just wonder how does that blight and substandard work as far as, you know, the whole housing blight thing comes about, I mean, I understand they're wanting to develop that property, but where does that put me with this blight and substandard?
Just from, I mean, just from some experience in the real estate business, I mean, it's uh, they're, you're actually gonna see improvement on the blighted ground, so as far as your values, um,
Right.
In my opinion, it shouldn't hurt them, um, and potentially help them, just, just for the additional activity.
Expect my taxes to go up again.
And from a statutory perspective, um, that label would not be on your property, it would be on.
Just on that property.
Correct, correct.
Alrighty, uh, yeah, well, hopefully it goes well.
Yep, thank you for coming out. Public hearing's still open, anybody else wanna speak regarding fourteen E or fourteen E one, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and uh, take a motion on fourteen E one, if I have one. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve fourteen E one as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Prester, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item fourteen F, request to approve the twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-seven capital improvement plan. And I will open this up for public hearing, so is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding the capital improvement plan? Fourteen F, please come forward. Public hearing is open for fourteen F, if anybody would like to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and uh, do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make motion, we approve fourteen F.
Second.
Motion by Stinson, second by Prester, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two-zero-two-one dash thirty, to authorize the mayor to sign the lobbying agreement between the United Cities of Sarpy County and Kissel Coho so, and Associates LLC for lobbying services before the Nebraska State Legislature and Governor. So, a motion. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, mayor, I'll move to approve item fifteen A.
Second.
Motion by Prester, second by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, takes us to sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the MOU, memorandum of understanding with Omaha Council Bluffs, MAPPA, Metro Planning Agency for the Fortbrook Road Multi-Mot- Modal Transportation or Redevelopment Study on the city's local match in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the study. Do you have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item sixteen D as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or questions, discussion? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, sixteen E, approve the purchase of ten docking stations, four laptop computers, six barcode readers, ten in-car printers, and fifteen VPN licenses, do you have a motion? Councilman Prester, or Prester, I'm looking right at you, Stinson, Councilman Stinson?
Make motion, we approve sixteen E. Second.
Motion by Stinson, second by Prester. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the city of Bellevue and HDR Engineering, Inc., in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars for services related to industrial facility location. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, mayor, I move to approve item sixteen F.
A second.
Motion by Prester, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, item sixteen G, recommendation to approve a separate agreement with Chamber of Commerce for additional funding for marketing and rebranding services in an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table sixteen G to October fifth. And if I get a second, then I'll.
I'll second that.
And, and part of the reason is, uh, the chambers uh, has a new CEO president that starts September first. I think that the board meets the third Thursday of the month, and so I thought it'd be appropriate to let the new CEO maybe talk to the, uh, the board and maybe get us some answers or come back with something.
Okay, motion by Cook, second by Welch to table until October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, are there, is there any further discussion? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, seventeen, administration reports, comments, uh, must be limited. Here's the monthly reports are given at the first council meeting each month, August report will be attached to the September seventh council packet, so, and then I just wanna add, um, that at the, um, there will be a public hearing for the budget, and that will be August thirty-first at six P M. So, that will uh, give uh, people opportunity to uh, um, talk regarding the budget hearing, and that's a separate hearing, it's here in the council chambers, there will be a public hearing, and it will be August thirty-first at six P M. Item eighteen, there's no closed session, so I will take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Prester, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.